All right, everybody, welcome to the Tuesday, July 22nd, 2025 meeting, regular meeting of the Larkspur Planning Commission. Let's have a roll call.
Commissioner Blackstaff?
Here.
Commissioner Campbell?
Present.
Commissioner Swisher?
Present.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Present.
Commissioner Hull?
Here.
You have a quorum present?
Excellent. So first item is any public comment on matters that are not on the agenda. So are there any matters not on the agenda for tonight that people would like to comment on? Or on Zoom? All right. Hearing none. We'll go to the Community Development Director's report.
The city council on Wednesday, July 23rd, is going to be considering new green building, introducing new green building regulations. And their meeting begins at five o'clock. And that's all I have to report.
All right. Next item is continued public hearing for 111 Wiltshire Avenue, APN 021-134-04. Rich Viola applicant owner. And the request was for demolition of the existing residence and construction of a new 3,400 square foot, two-story, single-family home. Design review, a front setback variance, a floor area ratio exception for 0.35 FAR, where 0.27 is allowed, a heritage tree removal, and a slope use permit for 344 cubic yards of cut and fill. I am a neighbor to this, so I must recuse myself. So I will turn it over to Liam.
All right, thank you. Do you have to leave?
I have to leave.
Okay.
Leave the dais.
All righty. Can we have the staff report, please?
Yes. So, good evening, commissioners. As you've just heard, the item before you is PLN 25004 for 111 Wiltshire Avenue. This item was continued from your June 24th hearing. And at that hearing, you had reviewed the project, taken public comment and provided feedback to the applicant, and then continued the item. For a bit of a refresher here, it's a Wiltshire Avenue address currently, but it's located along Ardmore and Upper Ardmore Road. If the project is approved, it would be readdressed to 8 Upper Ardmore. And the project proposes to demolish the existing residence and construct a new 3,400 square foot, two-story residence with an attached 487 square foot garage, which requires you to approve a design review, floor area ratio exception, a setback variance, a slope use permit, and heritage tree removal permit. Here's the site plan, and maybe a little hard to see on the overhead, but the red outline here is the footprint of the previous design. It has been reduced by about 600 square feet, which has been done through some shrinking of the footprint itself, and then some complete removal of some rooms on both levels of the residence. But the general form and style remain the same. And then I've got the proposed floor plans for you. I've got the proposed, followed immediately by the prior design. So this is the revised design here. And then just to give you an example, this is the prior design that you saw. And the notable difference is here is that the entry has been reworked. There was an office area adjacent to the staircase that's been removed, and then the staircase has been reoriented along the front of the residence. It's still, the first level still contains living areas and a bedroom. And the proposed second floor has also shrunk, a bedroom was removed. Here's the prior design, where there was four bedrooms, and now it is three. And then in place of that fourth bedroom, the laundry has been relocated in that same general vicinity. And here are the elevations. The prior design is the elevation on the top, and the revised design is the elevation on the bottom. So you can see where some areas have been removed and reworked. And as I had mentioned, the style remains the same, kind of the front entry tower, so to speak, has widened because the staircase has been shifted. Here's the east elevation. It's hard to see in the 2D, but this is one of the elevations where a room, an area, was removed from the second floor. So it's not quite as, it doesn't protrude out quite as far. And here's the rear of the home, which you can see on the lower level. That is the area that's been removed from the second story. And finally, here's the west elevation, which remains largely the same. And the applicant did update the renderings. So the prior design is on the lower level, and the revised design is at the top. And here's the overhead rendering, which may be a little, little too dark to see. I apologize. So the project does require a floor area ratio exception. The prior design had a floor area ratio of 0.4. It's been reduced to 0.35. The prior design would have been the largest floor area of the surrounding residences within 300 feet. This is now the third largest. The average FAR is 0.21, and the project exceeds its allowed FAR by .08. The prior design had a front setback variance request of 2 feet 4 inches from the front property line. Based on your feedback and feedback from the neighbors, it's been reworked. So now the residence would be 6 feet 9 inches from the front property line along Ardmore. And that matches the existing condition of the residence that's there currently. The rear of the structure, which is still against a front property line, is 10 feet 4 inches from that property line. The project proposes 172 cubic yards of cut and fill. That has remained unchanged from the prior design. It's a balanced cut and fill, so there should be no off-haul. And lastly, per the feedback received at the last meeting, the applicant has reworked the rear yard area. So the two redwood trees that were previously proposed for removal have been retained. There are still three bay trees that are heritage sized, which are proposed for removal, but those are defined as fire-prone trees and have been deemed a hazard. You've received two public comments, two written public comments in advance of tonight's meeting, both, I believe, from neighbors requesting further revisions and reductions in the size of the proposed residence. And just to conclude my report here, we recommend that you hold a public hearing, consider public testimony, and approve the application subject to findings, conditions of approval, and a Class 3 sequel exemption. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the project applicant and owner is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay. Do we have the applicant here? Would you like to say something?
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? I prepared a few, a little bit longer conversation and, and comments that I want to share. First, I just want to start by introducing myself, which I barely did that. I'm Rich Viola. I've lived in Marin since 1982. I moved to Tiburon in 2011 with my family and just finished all of the amazing public schools here with our youngest, just graduating from Redwood. Throughout our time in these public schools, this is why people come to Southern Marin. That's why it's so desirable, or at least one of the reasons the schools are so great. My wife and I have held every position possible in the schools, from the Reed Schools to even at Redwood and the Redwood Foundation. My wife led the, the music boosters. So we've been heavily involved in the schools there. In Tiburon, our family, in 2014, we started the Tiburon Turkey Trot on Thanksgiving. We got it up to 800 people, raised over $60,000 in six years. And every Black Friday, we went and bought toys, gifts with every penny we collected, and we donated to adopt a family in Marin, as well as the Ritter Center in San Rafael. So great community event that had, you know, two purposes, bringing people together and then giving back to those in need. My most recent community-based project, I led the Scotty Lapp Memorial Skate Park that was recently built and donated to the town of Tiburon. It's 5,500 square foot skate park. I'm a board member on the Scotty Lapp Foundation. We raised a million dollars, and we spent 700,000 of that dollars, of those, of that money, to rebuild that skate park. And in February, we donated it to the town with a big celebration. I worked with everyone in that community, from the mayor all the way down to some of the maintenance workers on Public Works. Awesome community project. So community is very important to me, and I've done a lot of community projects. Obviously, now I'm doing a little bit more real estate within the community, and I, I love it. A few of them, when you pick out literally tile and all the little details, it's hard to not fall in love with some of the projects we've worked on. So we've actually moved into a few of them. And those we didn't, we're still in contact with the owners of the properties. And I do this for fun. I think someone called me an amateur developer, and I think that's true. It's super fun working on these projects and transforming spaces, homes, properties. It's really, really fun. But I'm not amateur in that. I follow all the proper guidelines and hired, you know, license and all that stuff. But I am amateur, and I, I do it for fun, and I really, really like it. For this Wiltshire property, as you guys have seen, I just thought it was the most amazing lot. And we, when we got the place, there were four bids. It was only developers. The reality of, of, of homes in Southern Marin that are uninhabitable, it's very unlikely that a young family is going to buy that home, because they need a place to live, and they, back to the schools, they want to send their kids to those schools. So we, we beat out other developers to get the project. And when we saw the first plans from the architect, my wife's like, um, why wouldn't we live there? And I agreed with her. I thought it was awesome. It's an awesome location. And so while we were initially a little disappointed with the first meeting, like I said, I do this for fun. It was just a challenge, and it was really fun to go back, work with the architect. I met with Alex, like, what are the things we need to change? And quite honestly, I feel like it's an improvement. Like, the house is actually better than what I presented a month ago. And there were four key areas that we focused on. Number one was the trees that were obviously an issue. So we kept all the redwood trees, and we're removing all of the bay trees that are a fire hazard. We also are adding trees in the front. I think there's five in the front and two by the, the side deck. So we knew that was something that we heard from people that were here in the room, as well as people online. The second thing was the setback, right? I think we were 2 feet 4 inches. And so we thought, okay, let's use the current existing property. What is that measurement? And it was 6'9". Okay, let's start with 6'9", and how can we tweak this property so that we're not asking for a setback that's any greater than the existing home? And we also looked at the width of that home, it was 24 feet, and we challenged our architect, hey, can we be 6'9" and 24 feet wide? And we did achieve that in the new drawings. There's, I, I'm sorry, I don't remember her name. Mrs. Heineken gave some numbers of the width of the front, and that includes the, the entry, covered entry. And I didn't include that in my 24-foot calculation, because it feels a little bit different, because it's open space. But it is long, and it's long because the new law in California for new builds, you can't plant anything within five feet of the home. So we just extended that hardscape entry patio. It can be reduced, but then there's just kind of going to be a hole there. See, the third thing, obviously, was the FAR. We reduced it from 40 to 35. We reduced the square footage from 4,000 to 3,400. And I think Alex kind of talked a, a little bit about some of the things we, we did, but we eliminated the office, the upstairs bedroom and bathroom. We sort of shrunk the living space, that great room bit, and we actually moved it east or west? I don't, I think, what, east? Away from the hillside, which also was another big thumbs up, because we were able to make windows bigger, let more natural light come into that side of, of the property, of the home. So was feeling really good about that. See, the first thing that we did, that we wanted to focus on was reducing the second story on the side that mirrored 87 Wiltshire. They had brought up some concerns of the height and shadows, and so we moved that eight feet. And I'm pleased to share that I just got an email from that homeowner that said, thank you so much for making all these changes. Appreciate it. No further comments from us. So feeling good about that. We've been really mindful of the setbacks across the entire property. I think we talked about how unique this lot is. It's a horseshoe lot. There's front setbacks basically on all three sides of the property. So we already talked about the front setback went from 2'4" to 6'9". The side setback, which is the horseshoe, is now, it's actually, we've moved it approximately 16 feet from the old existing home. So that's moved over significantly from the street. The back houses, of the back of the houses, the majority of that is in compliant, and then the rear setback, which shares the line with 87 Wiltshire, is compliant at 15 feet. You've, you've seen the property line, how it cuts through the property. It's very unique. So I think another thing to note is the front is 26 feet from the road. The side is 58 feet from the road, and the, and the rear of the house is 32 feet from the, from the road. I've seen the letters from the neighbors, so I just want to address those. Can you pull up what I sent you? Yeah. Yeah, can you go slide? I think slide three. That's good. So I, the Heinekens lived there 39 years, and I don't remember the last name, but 108 Ardmore, 15 years. It's a long time. And I feel like it's been a primarily a flat lot for a really long time. Change is hard. And so I empathize that people are like, okay, wow, second two-story building, like, this is very different from what has been there. And I just have to say that whether it's me or another homeowner, another developer, this lot was meant to be reimagined. And I don't think anyone is going to rebuild into the hillside the way the current structure is. It's an awesome lot. That's why we bought it, that can have a private backyard. There's just so many awesome things about it. And as you hear from some of the neighbors, I just request that you keep an open mind, and, and hopefully, we learn a little bit more about how their challenges ultimately affect them. So this is a view from our house. That's 108 Ardmore. If you can go to the next slide, this, that would have been the front door. This is a view of the old story pole, so they're back four and a half feet. This is a view from a corner, the corner of their driveway. And they come up Wiltshire, and they turn 180 into their driveway and enter their home, and their home faces the other direction. So they would have this view for two or three seconds a day. Right? And as I read the letter, concerns about the home, concerns about the backyard that they'll never see, I just don't really understand. I'm kind of confused as to how this will really impact the neighbor at 108 Ardmore. For 5 Upper Ardmore, I think it's a bigger deal. Like, the Heinekens have lived there for 39 years. They've been driving by this, an almost empty lot for 39 years. It's a big change, right? But ultimately, a two-story built house is going to go in this lot. A reimagined lot or home with a backyard is going to happen, whether it's me or someone else that buys it from me and is in here in six months. Like, I think this lot was due for complete reimagination. And I, and I sympathize with the Heinekens, because they've lived here for a long time, and they take great pride. Their son lives around the corner. They've talked a lot about how they removed the trees that lined. I think there's a picture of this, and if you can go back. One more, sorry. So they removed all these trees here. And when we bought the property, we were like, oh, great, there's no trees, but these stumps are ugly. And we also think this area, just like they do, is so beautiful. That was the first thing we did. We worked with Public Works, and we grinded down all the stumps, so you have a really clear, clean road here, right? So we're actually partners in removing the trees from the Upper Ardmore. I think Janet sent an email with lots of numbers. I met with Paul initially. We're talking about an ADU and a smaller home. And if you add up all the numbers, like, we are way smaller than anything we initially spoke to them about and what we presented in the meeting two, about a month ago. That first indication, if you add up her numbers with the main home garage ADU, it was 4,500 square feet. Last month, we presented 48, 4,489. Today, we're at 3,885. So I hope that we'll just take into consideration that there's two neighbors above us that send in support. The neighbor below us has withdrawn any challenges, and really try and understand, okay, how will this home, which I get is very different from what's there, but how will this actually impact these neighbors? I, I feel like change is hard, construction is difficult, but when it's all done, I think you're going to be driving by a pretty awesome new home. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission for the applicant?
I had a quick question. So it looks like the story poles for the garage are, are, are pretty tall. And I was wondering, taller than, seems like there's a nine-foot plate there. It's unclear on the drawings, but I went up there and, and it looked
Like, right when you pull in?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, I don't know. I, I, I was, I was so focused on the front. But the, I mean, the story poles might be off. I don't know. Oh, actually, I have the height here of the garage.
That was the, that was the other thing.
Standard height.
On, on what we have to read, they're teeny weeny.
Oh, okay.
The magnifying glass out.
16'3" to the peak of the roof of the garage.
Of the garage.
Okay. It, it just, the side poles are, are, seem to be much higher than what's indicated in the drawings. I don't know why. And I didn't know whether you brought up the driveway up or something. Okay.
Staff, address that?
Maybe. Can staff address that?
I am trying to pull up the plans here right now. Give me just a second.
I think it's on.
For the ridge height or the plate height of the, the garages?
I was just curious what, what the plate height was, because it's definitely, I think it's supposed to be nine feet. Again, I couldn't seem to pull that off the drawings.
Does look like it's a little taller than nine feet on sheet. A 3.1, there's a, there's no measurement, but the kitchen is shown as nine foot 10, and the garage is shown as a little bit bigger than that, maybe 12 or something. Right? Okay. Anything else that you guys have for the applicant? Or should we take public comments? Okay. Let's open up the public comment portion of the meeting. Is there anyone in the room that has a public comment on this matter? Sure, yeah. If you could just please come up to the microphone and introduce yourself, and then we're going to try and keep public comments to around three minutes or so.
I'm Janet Heineken, and I live at 5 Upper Ardmore. I have a few points I'd like to make and a few questions to ask. So I wrote down my thoughts, because last time I got really off track. So if you excuse me, I'll read as quickly as I can. The newly released plan for 111 Wiltshire has reduced the square footage by 600 square feet to an FAR of 3.35, which is still quite high. And it really hasn't altered the footprint of the property significantly, if you look at the aerial view. And the size of the footprint has been reduced by 300 feet, and the visual impact from the road is pretty much the same from what I can see. The most important impediment for me is the, the visual impact. And as you know, the front yard setback is now 6.9 to 7.3 inches over a 39-foot length. And the setback is 15 feet 3 inches over a 29-foot length. So we're not talking about the corner of a structure. The entire 68 feet is non-conforming. And the impact of the placement is illustrated in the photo that I sent to you. And I actually went and I did some measurements on the ground and just did a rough reconstruction. I have some drafting experience. To just give an idea of the visual impact. I do understand that development in Larkspur is now being encouraged, and that the FAR slope calculations need adjustment. But even under new adjustments, I would expect that this project would require multiple exceptions or variances. And, and I think that raises the question. Why do we have zoning ordinances? Do they exist only to harass property owners such as me or Rich Viola? Or do they actually serve a purpose? Do they help to, are they part of a necessary component of maintaining the character of a community such as ours, which many find so attractive? So when one purchases a property, should one expect that the ordinances will not apply? Does one, or does one work within the regulations of the municipality? So these are the questions I ask you, because it puts me, the neighbor, in a position to feel like an a-hole coming up and saying, you know, I don't know if this is right. Like, this is an exception. Am I supposed to say yes? So I just raise those questions. And though I don't want to quibble about the size of the property, are we on a slippery slope here? I believe in reality, that's not a great lot. It's dark in the winter. It's bounded on three sides by a road. You know, it's, it's not a great property to build a dream home on. So I believe a 3,000-square-foot house would be more appropriate, but I think, you know, giving exceptions up to 3,500 or 3,600 square feet is not unreasonable. And just for reference, an FAR of 3 point, of .32 is 3,556. And .33 would be 3,670. And we spoke about that last time, and sort of said that's the halfway point. So, you know, I'm asking a general question for our community. I ask you to consider existing ordinances when making a decision. And though some exceptions should certainly be granted, I believe that a less intrusive, more appropriately-sized home with the proper setback requirements may be more appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to comment?
I'm Mindy Glass Sagmeister. I live at 108 Ardmore, across the street from 111 Wiltshire. I would like to just reiterate everything that Janet said. We feel the same way. I, I have no problems with a new home. I think the architecture is beautiful. It's really quite lovely. I think we're going to end up with a really nice house. But, you know, we are out and about, walking our dog, meeting with neighbors. We're very involved in our little community. And I have to agree with Janet that when you see the story poles and how they've hardly moved, it's, the structure is almost identical to what it was before the changes were made. So, I mean, I feel like this just, if this is approved as is, it will set the precedence for future developers to come in and do pretty much whatever they want. And ideally, we just want to see a slightly smaller home, more appropriately sized on the lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Eric Sagmeister, 108. The only thing I would say is that I think optically, the issue is, as Janet had said, there's road all around the property horseshoe, right? And the house, really, it's not just one part of the house that's very close to the road. It's two-thirds to almost three-quarters of the entire house is visible by the road of all the residents or the hikers that want to go around that house. The difficulty is, is that the frontage is very tight, and then to be able to achieve what they want to achieve, or what Rich would like to achieve, you're going to have to carve into the hillside, which is literally, I'm going to leave like two to three feet of any kind of soil for anything to actually be built, to be in unison with other properties where, yeah, you can have a big home, that's great, but there's giant redwoods in the way, and I can't see you. You know, I mean, it's like, everyone's got their own little fortress of solitude, and then all of a sudden, this empty lot is getting carved out all the way to the road almost. And I would just like to maybe have something in the stipulations of, how are we naturally going to create a visual barrier? Because that is basically the way every other home is. And as they carve into the back hillside, the other hillside, and the frontage and everything else, the only thing that can be put up is maybe a six-foot fence, which if you go to that area, Which if you go to that area, you'll realize nobody has six foot fences up. And if, you know, so that's my biggest thing. And the only other thing I would add to maybe adjust or help the planning of it is something that we sacrifice living in that area is a backyard. Like when you're on a slope, you're just stoked by the view. You're stoked by the trees. You're glad, you know, you have your fortress of solitude. Backyards aren't something that is necessary in that area. And I'm not telling anyone how to build their house. But I'm just trying to find leeway or, you know what I mean, ways to adjust the current footprint to make it a little bit more away from that three quarters of the road horseshoe and maybe move the house back and and not have, you know, the necessity of a of a private backyard. Because that's not something many people enjoy in the area. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, is there anyone else in the room that would like to comment? All right. Is there anyone on Zoom? No. Okay, in that case, we will close the public comment portion of this item and we'll bring it back to the commission for some discussion. Anybody want to go first?
No, but I I had one question.
Oh, sure.
The applicant said that one of the neighbors had withdrawn a comment. And I just wanted to clarify. It was a comment that we read that has now been withdrawn.
It wouldn't have been one that you received for this meeting. Yeah, I believe it was a maybe a comment.
Just a conversation between a neighbor. Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
Brock, do you want to go first? Lead us off here?
All right, um, I will go first. I think they've actually done a lot to make it less intrusive, including some of the comments we made last time about pulling back from the the front, I call the front property line. And 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 I like the house. I think it's a good house. It's, I think it's better than it was before. Whether you could pull it further toward the the back of the house or the slope part of the house and and away from the street. I don't think it would actually make any difference in in a visual sort of sense. And I think part of it's going to depend on what you plant and and the trees that you put in and how big they are to begin with. But I think you could mitigate the 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 feeling of the house being sort of stuck out in the open by planting. But I'll kind of wait and see what everybody else has to say, too.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to the to the other end.
I agree with Commissioner Wagstaff. I think that the design is still lovely. And I think it's a very unique lot. And it's why we end up with exceptions is because of very strange lots like yours. Honestly, yours is a strange lot surrounded, you know, in the horseshoe by the the all the roads. And I think that there's really no place that you're going to be able to put that house on that lot and not have it be seen to one of the neighbors' points from all the three roads. I mean, that's just reality. It's not going to be covered in camouflage and 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 trees. And I think, you know, as Commissioner Wagstaff said, you know, it's it's what you plant that, you know, helps mitigate that, the view. But I I think you've made a really good bunch of changes.
I'm just going to start by addressing the comment about the zoning laws and complying with the zoning laws. And yes, we do have to comply with zoning laws. And that's one of the reasons why people come in and apply for permits. Within the code, there are prescribed exceptions, which if an applicant can comply with the prescribed exceptions, they come in, present their case, we as a commission review that, or staff looks at it first, we look at it. And if we can make if they if we can make the findings to comply with the exceptions, which are part of the code, then we're sort of obliged to grant the exception. So that is all part of our local city code. So I just wanted to clarify that as well, that it is these exceptions are not just granted out of thin air. They are specific exceptions that people apply for. The one area that has gone a little sideways, I guess you could say, or or has has changed over time is the FAR. And almost every property that we've looked at, every applicant has come in, has asked for an FAR exception, which is why we as a commission have been looking at changing the code to comply with what the city is doing today and how what's reasonable today. And that's a conversation for another time. But back to this particular one eleven Wilshire. I mean, I I had expressed my opinions on the design in the last meeting. I did like the design very much and we had talked about reducing the FAR, reducing the size. And I can see that the applicant has made a good effort to do that. And I'm very pleased that you have come in and and listened to what the commission has asked for. And I can see that you have done that and reserved the preserved the redwood trees, which was asked for as well. What I'm hearing from the neighbors are that it's still too big and the visual impact on the road. So on the visual impact of the road, again, I think that my commissioners are right. I mean, it's really going to have to be, I mean, you're sort of it. The best way, I think, in this case, because it is such an unusual lot, is to is to do the foliage, do the trees. And I don't know, as part of our motion, maybe we can, I think something's already in here. But whether we can have the applicant work with staff to make sure that there are sufficient trees and there are, it sounds like privacy is a really important part for this neighborhood. That's an unusual lot. I mean, you're going to be driving all the way around there and it's going to take a special buyer to be comfortable with that. Because when I drive by it, I realize I can look in. But that's up to a buyer and that, I mean, you knew that buying that property as well. So I think maybe we can build something into a motion where the applicant is required to work with staff to the required trees around that to reduce the visual impact on the property. That's my thought on it.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
But yeah, I can make the rest of the findings.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think I I had some comments last time and I I about specifically the floor area. I think we said that we would prefer if it was lowered by about five percent. And about the trees, those were kind of our two sticking points, I think, if I recall last time, those are the issues that I had. And I think I feel like those have those have been addressed. The the size of the house has been reduced and and those two redwood trees are are being retained. I I I am not, I'm not an architect. It it seems like the house could be moved back a little bit into the sort of the rear yard. But it seems to me that there's there because the property line is sort of arbitrary when you compare that to the road. It seems like there's there will be sufficient space between the road and the and the residence that I think with some, you know, some some tree screening and foliage, I think that the sort of the effects of that can be masked. But there there will be no masking, the fact that there's a house where there was not a house previously. And, you know, that's I think, as we've discussed tonight, that's something that's going to happen sort of no matter the design, I guess, that there's a structure where there wasn't before. But I think in terms of these five, the findings for the five items that we've been asked to review tonight, I think I can make make the findings. Do you have anything else that you want to add after hearing that?
I really don't, you know, I mean, I'm not designing the house, so you brought it before us. We gave you what we thought needed to be done and you've pretty much done that in terms of the reduction and and I think it's going to be a fine house. It it there's no way to hide that house. That's all there is to it. Basically, what what Liam said is you drive around it. And again, I think landscaping is really important.
So maybe we could ask the applicant, are is there a landscaping plan that you've prepared? I don't think it's in our packet here.
It would have been with the in the
In the previous pack.
Previous plan, so yeah.
Okay, maybe you could pull that up, Alex, and we can see if there's, you know, see what kind of tree screening is is
Is there something we should be more specific in tonight or is there something that we can have?
Yeah, or maybe we can just have staff.
Staff work with, yeah.
Is that something that you guys would feel staff would feel comfortable in if we gave that direction?
Well, if if this plan has been approved by the fire department, that would be good if you could look at it. But my concern is just that there's so many restrictions now on planting trees near roads, near structures, that I wouldn't rely on them being able to plant any screening unless you actually have a plan that's been reviewed by the fire department. But it this plan right here looks like there's a lot of screening proposed by the street.
So so this is the same plan. This hasn't changed then. I thought there was a comment from the applicant that they were they were adding more trees as compared to the first submittal. Do you want to come to the podium? Sorry.
I think someone had just asked if we were adding trees and I couldn't remember if if where we were. So I didn't want to comment on it. So I think there was just some uncertainty around what trees. But there are seven new trees. Five in the front and two on the side, in addition to all the additional foliage along along the front.
Okay, thank you.
But but this is this way, right, isn't it?
Are you you guys still reviewing that one?
I know that's the same. No, here it there it is. Good to work as. I don't even know what these trees are. We know what these trees are.
You get some gardenias and
or laurels.
Yeah, they're they're listed as bay laurels.
Camellia, gardenias, yeah.
Yeah, I thought the bay trees were not allowed by the fire department.
Yeah, the fire department, they had reviewed the landscape plan and signed off on it without making the comment. But I suspect that the type of tree may
Okay.
change.
Okay, but I guess we can assume that the that the type of tree will be changed, but that a different tree will be replaced in in kind.
I would, you could add that.
Add that to the motion. Okay, let's do that.
What was that?
So the bay trees are a fire hazard. It sounds like something that the fire department potentially missed. So in our motion, maybe we should add that those bay trees, if the fire department objects, should be replaced with a similar non-fire prone tree.
Or say that the landscape plan should be re-reviewed by the fire department?
Yeah, but the other option is if the fire department says bay trees aren't allowed, would be take out the bay trees, but we want, I think, we want some kind of tree.
We want trees.
We're trying to encourage the trees, yeah, or foliage or something.
I agree.
Yeah, so let's, I think that makes sense to add it to our our motion.
So can we make a motion?
I don't think I can.
You want me to do it? Okay. Okay, I make a motion to approve project number twenty five zero zero four for one eleven Wilshire Avenue, subject to an additional condition whereby the well, two conditions, I guess, is one is that the applicant works with staff to provide enough screening and coverage around the property. And secondly, in the event that the fire department requires removal of the bay trees, an equal number of trees or bushes are replaced.
Yeah, similar tree, similar type, right? Trees, similar size.
A similar sized fire restrictive, but fire resistant trees. So this is trees now we're talking about, yeah.
Yeah. It's not just not replace it with a bush.
Are replaced, okay.
Okay, can we have a second?
I'll second.
And can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
And Commissioner Swisher's recused.
Okay.
Carries.
And the appeal period?
There is a ten day appeal period. Anyone from the public can file an appeal with the city clerk by filing the appeal form and paying the appeal fee within ten calendar days.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to everyone who made made your voices heard. And I'll turn it back over to the true chair.
The true chair.
The one true chair. All right. Let's go after if anybody wants to leave, that would be the time. All right, so next up is two two three Magnolia Avenue, APN zero two one dash one one two dash one one. Polsky Pearlstein Architects and the applicant is Alexander Avalon. This is a request for a demolition of four hundred and twenty square feet of the existing first floor and an addition of five hundred and eighty five square feet to the first floor in the same location. So there's a net addition of one hundred and sixty five square feet and an addition of two hundred and sixty four feet to the second story. This is for a design review. As a note, it's listed on the city's historic resources inventory. It's a variance to allow the residence to be constructed seven feet, two inches from the property line. And the second story to be constructed seventeen feet, six inches from the property line, where twenty feet is required in both cases. There's a request for a new trellis, which would be two point eight feet from the eastern property and nine feet from the front property. An additional variance to allow one uncovered parking space and one guest parking space, where one uncovered parking space and two guest parking spaces are required. And finally, a heritage tree removal to allow the removal of one cedar and one grapefruit tree. So can we have the staff report?
Yes, give me just a moment to share my screen here. So this item was before you at your July eighth hearing. So I'm just going to kind of go quickly through the things you've already seen and then talk about the parking variance. As a bit of a reminder, the project is just down the street here on Long Magnolia Avenue. And it proposes to demolish a portion of the first story and reconstruct a larger addition in the same location and a new second story addition. It requires approval of design review, a setback and a parking variance and heritage tree removal. As a refresher, here's the site plan. All of the additions occur at the rear of the structure. And the second story is here, sort of underneath this red outline, which you may not be able to see. And then as a part of this, the garage is being converted to an ADU. And here's the floor plans. The addition is at the rear. Again, it's a bedroom. It's a living areas, a staircase, bathroom. And the second floor is another bathroom laundry area staircase. The elevations of the materials remain the same. The profile of the house that you see from the street does not change all that much as everything's concentrated at the rear. Here are the renderings provided by the applicant. The project does require a setback variance. The proposed first story addition is only seven feet, two inches from the front property line, where twenty feet is required. And the trellis would be nine inches from the front property line. And so now to the parking variance. This was not noticed at the last meeting, which is why it had to return to this meeting. So as the commission is likely aware, the R one zone requires a total of four parking spaces, one covered, one uncovered and two guest spaces. Sometimes the guest spaces can be accommodated on the street, but Magnolia is not wide enough to count any of the frontage as a guest space. Because they are converting the garage to an ADU, they do not have to replace the the covered parking that they are removing. So their requirement is one uncovered and two guest spaces. They are only able to accommodate one uncovered and one guest space due to a number of factors, the shallow width of a shallow depth of the lot, the creek, the stand of redwood trees, and the fact that requiring more parking would likely remove any usable yard area that they have. So staff is supportive of the parking variance that's being requested. And lastly, they are asking to remove two heritage trees. As you'll remember, there is a sixty six inch circumference cedar tree that the arborist noted has a high risk of failure and a fifty inch circumference grapefruit tree that was noted as healthy, but a nuisance. To that end, because it's healthy, staff has included the condition of approval that the tree be retained. It's condition of approval number three. However, if the commission supports removal as a part of your motion, you could move to remove that condition from the list of conditions of approval. There has been one public comment in support of this project. That is a whole That is a holdover from your last meeting. There's no new comments. It was a letter in support from the owners of fifty-eight Madrone. And so in conclusion, staff recommends that you hold a public hearing, consider public testimony, discuss and approve the project subject to findings, conditions of approval and classes one and thirty-one secua exemption. That concludes my report. Can answer any questions. And the project owner and architect are here as well. Thank you.
Great. Do you have any questions? That's a pretty darn big grapefruit tree. Yeah, okay. All right, so no other questions?
Actually, I have one. Does the, the, the condition eighteen, that's the encroachment permit that the applicant's required to enter into, right?
Uh, yes, it should be.
I asked about that in the last meeting.
They will have to get an, an encroachment permit. Yes, that was locked by public works.
I just wanted to clarify, that's what that was, okay.
Right. Is the owner, uh, or architect, I, I see Jared's here, right, uh, go ahead.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, my name's Alex. I'm the property owner. Just give you a little brief history. We bought the house in twenty twenty. My wife and I have two young kids that live there currently, maybe a third on the way, we'll see. We love the house. We love the location. It's a very, very challenging site with Magnolia, with the creek, with all the redwood trees, and then it's also historic. So what you're seeing is the culmination of almost two years of really trying to work with even a previous architect, Jerry Halon, the historic architect, Kristen Teiki at the time when she was here. Um, so there's been a long evolution for us to get to this point and we're really proud of kind of the project and, you know, the house has a foundation from eighteen ninety-five. There's things we need to do to like upgrade it and make it safe. We need to move the stairs because they're, they're not to code. So what you're seeing is just really trying to make the house functional for a growing family. In terms of the driveway, it's very challenging for us to park in the driveway, uh, because right now it's tandem parking. And so if my wife has to get out, I have to move my car or I just end up parking somewhere in the neighborhood and not utilizing the, the full driveway. So we're trying to widen the driveway and get two parallel spots. We've also had a lot of damage to our cars from the beautiful redwood trees. Sustained over thirty thousand dollars worth of damage to my car alone. So we want to put a trellis and a protective structure just in that area. Again, really just trying to, you know, make it functional and make it safe. And then the grapefruit tree, um, it's as tall as the house. It's a massive grapefruit tree. I, I don't know when it was planted. It, it was obviously planted by a previous homeowner. It's within four feet of the retaining wall. So my, my background is civil engineering. It's, it's really within the zone of influence of that retaining wall. And it's providing a, you know, a bearing load on the soil, which is imposing load on the retaining wall. So it just feels like at some point, that's sort of something that needs to be corrected. It's also a tripping hazard, kind of its root structure. It's like, it's like three trees fused together. So we, we, you know, if you feel like it's important to save it, we're happy to save it, but it's really not visible from the street. People said it was, but there's like one sliver from the street where you can see it, but you're mostly drawn to all the redwood trees around us. And yeah, I mean, we're really just trying to improve the house and, um, again, it's, it's been a two-year journey to get here. And, um, we, we do have support from other neighbors. Um, I, I think I shared last time. We were noticed kind of right before the holiday and a lot of folks were out of town, but, um, Beth and Marty Katz, who live at two fifteen Magnolia, um, they've been over multiple times to see the project. They're in full support of it. They actually can't see anything from, from their house because there's like eleven redwood trees behind our house, blocking their view, but they're in full support of the project. And then Edie and Warren, uh, at the corner of Magnolia and Baltimore are also in full support. And I think I shared her email, uh, last time. So, um, we've done the best we can of working with a really challenging lot with a historic structure um, and really just trying to improve the functionality of the home. We're not adding additional bedrooms. We're not adding additional, um, really amenities within the house aside from, um, a laundry room, an additional bathroom. And the ADU is to provide my wife and I space to work. We can work from home Mondays and Fridays. Um, and also for grandparents to visit. Um, both sets of grandparents live out of state. So that's really our intent. So the intent is to make this house work for the long term. Interestingly enough, if you look at the history of the house, it goes up for sale every five or six years because people end up growing out of it. And it's just the, the, um, the functionality isn't there, right? So we're trying to correct that. So with that, I'll sit back down.
Chair, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay. All right. So public comment. Is there anybody here who would like to speak on this property? Anybody on Zoom?
Yes, there's one hand on Zoom. It's the number ending in one-four-zero-two. Should be able to unmute.
Um, James Holmes, Larksboro. Further to the request regarding the, um, healthy, visible grapefruit tree that's not in the, uh, path of proposed development. Uh, there is no, um, evidence in the record regarding hazard to the, uh, retaining wall and the, uh, ordinance does not, tree removal ordinance does not, uh, uh, authorize, uh, pure speculation. I, um, reading the, uh, staff, uh, reading the, uh, arbors report makes clear that there's really no basis at all for removal under the ordinance, which focuses on hazard. The, uh, staff report, uh, not staff report, the, uh, the, um, uh, arbors report says it has not been maintained to a height where fruit is easily picked without a ladder and that it's fallen fruit is a nuisance. So we're, we're, yeah, the nuisance is not even, uh, the tree itself, it's, it's fallen fruit. Well, fruit, uh, it's, it fruits be picked up. And, uh, so, uh, there really is nothing in the ordinance which permits this kind of what I would characterize as just a, a convenience, uh, cutting. Uh, at the prior hearing, it was suggested that perhaps there is a fire hazard issue and reviewing the, uh, report makes clear that the fire hazard reference was to other trees, not to this tree. Additionally, there was a comment made about trees, fruit trees tend to die. Well, as, uh, Kane said, uh, in the long run, we're all dead, but there's no evidence in the record that this tree is sinessing, uh, in any respect. It is, uh, healthy, as the staff said. Uh, so that, uh, I think it should be maintained and, uh, there's, uh, it's very classic. The vintage is very classic regarding, uh, the type of tree for this type of house and, uh, no basis to cut it. So, uh, it should be retained as the, uh, staff suggests. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Um, any other comments? All right, let's bring it back to the commission then. Um, let's see, we started with, we'll start with Natasha this time. No, you did not.
So in the last meeting, I, I, I think I already addressed that I can make the findings for the design review and the, uh, the variance for the, um, the front property line. The new one is the variance for the parking. And, um, so I'm just really going to address that one and the tree removal. So given the, where the property is, I think you don't really have an altern- alternative. And you, so I can, I can make, I can make the, um, the, the findings for the variance for the parking space. I did ask about the grapefruit tree. I, I can, I can see it from the street and I've seen that tree and I actually think it's a beautiful tree. I have to say, I do disagree with Mr. Holmes. Um, I think, oh wait, let me, I'm just going for the findings. If you look at the strict wording of the code, there are three conditions you have to comply with to make the findings for removal. And it's on page five, if you want to look. And, um, the, it won't have adverse to topography of the land, uh, or significant erosion. I don't think it will do that. After removal, um, it will not adversely affect the general health, safety and wa- welfare of the, uh, property or the vicinity. I don't think it will do that. And then the third one, which is the one I think Mr. Holmes is talking about, was the condition of the tree poses a hazard. With suspected disease, danger of falling proximity to existing proposed structures, et cetera. I think we can potentially make that because of the, um, hazard, it, based, because of the proximity to the house, which was addressed by the applicant. So I could probably go, I, I think where I'm standing here is I could probably go either way on this grapefruit tree. I think it's a beautiful tree. If it stayed, I'd be happy. If it has to go, I could make the findings for it.
Okay, thank you. Rock?
Well, as I said at the last meeting, I've had, um, been involved with this house a few times myself. And it could be that the people I, uh, my daughter's best friend might have planted that grapefruit tree, for all I know. I think they've done a really great job architecturally. I, if we can find a way to make findings for them to decide to, whether they want to keep the grapefruit tree or not, that would be my preference. Um, otherwise I'm supportive.
Uh, Ian?
Yeah, I think we covered most of these things. The parking, um, I think in sort of the downtown and that vicinity, it's, uh, it's hard to find the required parking on a, on a lot. And so I'm comfortable making the findings for the parking variance. For the tree, the tree removal, I, uh, I actually agree with the, the comments, the public comments that we had. I think I would have a hard time making the findings for the grapefruit tree. Um, you know, if you had an engineer say that it was impacting the retaining wall, I'm an engineer too and, um, you know, but, um, if, if you had something to that effect, then I would be a lot more comfortable commenting on the, the hazard. But, uh, in terms of the proximity, proximity to the house, um, you know, I think it's, I don't think it's, it's, it's close to the house, but it's, I don't think it's hazardously close to the house. So those are sort of, that's sort of my thoughts. I think I'd have a hard time making the finding for the grapefruit tree.
Okay.
I'm against the grapefruit tree. I'm just going to be clear. And I come from a, I come from a background where my, my father planted a gazillion fruit trees. He's since passed away. My sister and I have inherited the house and a lot of fruit trees, a lot of fruit trees. And, um, the grapefruit trees, one of the things that we've learned, because we have several, one of the things that you learn is that if they are not maintained properly, they don't do well. Like they, you end up with, you know, inferior fruit. The fruit doesn't taste good. And it's why, you know, seeing that the grapefruit tree has not been maintained for a long time and that that's what the arbors says, I'm thinking, let it go. You know, we, we spend a lot of time, you know, protecting redwoods. That makes sense to me. A grapefruit tree? Really? Redwood tree? Absolutely. Grapefruit tree? Maybe not so much. You can always plant another one somewhere else in the yard. But the redwood trees, I, I totally understand why, why that's a big deal. But when I, when they first came to us a couple of weeks ago, I was like, really? A grapefruit tree is a heritage tree? Like, where did that happen? Is it just because of the age and the size of it?
I am.
You know, it's like that, that to me doesn't make sense. You know, it's like just, just because of the size of it, it's a heritage tree. Like, maybe look at the type of tree. Redwoods, a hundred percent. Let's try to protect those. But, uh, grapefruit trees, especially one that's not been maintained, the arbors says it's, you know, it's a nuisance. I would let it go.
All right, so finally, uh, me. Design review, um, I think you'd made a brilliant design review on this. I think it's a really beautiful design and it's a beautiful house and it's a historic house. And I think what you've done is really adds to its appeal quite a bit. And I agree with you, from a family standpoint, it needed to be done if you want to have a larger family there. I have no problem with the variance for the, um, property line. And the same with the parking space. I, I, I think that's just the nature of where you live. I don't think it's possible to put a parking space on there and still enjoy the property as it is. As far as the tree goes, I mean, I love trees. I mean, I do love them. But I agree that a fruit tree isn't necessarily a heritage tree, just based on the fact that it has a fifty inch diameter, uh, which is what our, you know, rule is for that. Uh, we've had the same thing with a lemon tree on our property that it's, it got knocked down and now it's growing back up again. And it's quite nice, what is growing up in its place. Um, it's a very big grapefruit tree. How, how do they taste? Do they taste good at all? No, I wouldn't think so. Yeah, at this point. Yeah, I mean, the app, you know, you know, it happens with fruit trees over time. They just don't produce great, quite right. Yeah, together they fuse. I mean, so citrus trees do that. They fuse the, the trunks and stuff. So I would have no problem with, uh, um, having that removed. Because I, I mean, I think that it is correct that there are native trees here that should be protected and preserved, like redwoods, and there are others in that category. Uh, I, I don't think a grapefruit tree necessarily falls under that rubric. So I can make the findings. All right, can I have a motion? Rock, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah.
Yep.
I would move, uh, approval of, um, design review, uh, the variance for parking. The variance for, um, the, uh, res, uh, yeah, okay, let's try that. Project twenty-five oh oh six. And, uh, including the parking variance and, uh, the heritage tree removal.
If you could, if you could include in your motion that you're removing condition of approval number three? That's the one that says they retain the grapefruit tree.
Okay, I'm removing conditions number three.
I'll, I'll second that.
Uh, Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Chair Swisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
I'll abstain.
And Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
And motion passes four yeses and one abstention.
Thank you. And do you want to talk about?
Subject to a ten day appeal period, which can submit the required P and form, uh, within ten days to the city clerk.
All right, great. Congratulations. All right, the next item is another heritage tree removal permit for fourteen Diane Lane. Elizabeth Shuring, applicant, um, the property's owner is requesting a permit to remove one redwood tree in the front yard that is healthy, but located only six inches from the house, which may cause foundation damage as it grows and a fire risk and safety concern. The tr- the trunk, this is where I'm a little confused. The trunk diameter is a hundred and fifty-seven inches at twenty-four inches above the soil. If heritage tree is greater than fifty inches, but the diameter is only forty-eight inches at breast height? That seems like a really radical narrowing.
It, it is. If you see the photos in the
I looked at it, yeah.
Yeah, it has a really wide base. And so that's why the dimension was pointed out that, um, as the, as you go up the trunk, it, it's no longer heritage size further up. But we measure the heritage tree size two feet off the ground, where it just happens to be extremely wide. Otherwise, it wouldn't meet the dimension if it was a more uniform diameter.
And I need to recuse myself.
Oh, sorry. That's right.
Yeah.
Commissioner Wagstaff has a financial conflict of interest, so he's recusing from considering the item.
All right, so, uh, can I have the staff report, please?
So the applicant is requesting to remove a heritage redwood tree that's six inches from the residence on the site. And it has been determined to be a healthy redwood tree and no evidence has been provided to staff to date at least, that the tree is causing any damage to the residence or the foundation, although it is causing, it's obvious, causing obvious damage to the fence that's between the site and the adjacent neighbor's site. The arbors report indicates that it's going to cause foundation damage in the future, which I would imagine it probably will because the redwood tree is just going to continue to grow. And, uh, the arbors also indicated the tree was a fire hazard for being that close, but the fire inspector indicates that it's not a fire hazard, that redwood trees aren't a fire hazard. So he did not agree with that assessment. Staff was going to support removal of the tree just because it's, uh, going to continue to grow and eventually will cause damage to the residents. And so it's going to be less expensive to take out now than in the future when it starts causing damage. And also because it's not native, it's not in a redwood forest, um, like the prior house you were considering on Madrone. This is just one single redwood tree that grew in that neighborhood. But when we sent the notice out to neighbors indicating that we were going to support the removal, we received five protests against the tree removal. And then you received one additional protest since the staff report was prepared. And the neighbors, uh, noted just that they, um, support having this large tree in the neighborhood and that it also supports some bird, birds that they observe coming back to nest in the tree and, and that they're younger, living in the tree as well. and and that they're younger, living in the tree as well. And so based on the support the neighbors had for the tree and the lack of any evidence that it's causing any damage to the residents, we're recommending that you deny the tree removal permit or at least continue the item so that the applicant has an opportunity to present any more evidence on any damage that the tree may be causing to the to the structure. Some of the opponents of the tree removal did say that they would potentially feel differently if there was some evidence that the tree was harming the structure, but none has been presented yet. So that's our recommendation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I have questions. So because I have a I had a similar situation at my aforementioned father's house. He planted some redwood trees, but PG&E came through and our tree and paid to have our trees, redwood trees cut down that my dad had planted. But they were not as close to these power lines or whatever these utility lines are in this photo. And so I'm wondering, I think those might, I don't know that those are.
Are they telephone?
They might be like telephone and cable lines.
No telephone poles?
It's and those are the neighbor, one of the neighbors is here, so she can attest this more but to see if it's parallel to the street, because the trees, the tree is a distance from the street. Probably the most of those homes are 15 feet from the street. The tree is probably about 15 feet from the street.
Yeah, it's kind of on the corner.
Okay, is that the end of your? Okay. All right, we have public comment, please. Oh, I'm sorry, the applicant. Yeah, I apologize. Applicant comments and then public comments.
Thank you, members of the planning commission and staff. My name is John Shireen, and my family owns 14 Diane Lane. And just to be clear, this was not an easy decision in our household to even apply for this permit. We love that tree. We don't want to take down the tree. It's time, though. It's it's become, we've known we're going to have to do it eventually. And it, you know, now is the time we decided to apply for this permit. And we think it needs to be removed. It continues to grow. And as you guys observed, the base is gigantic versus the breast height. So I think the staff did a good job in their report. I don't really have anything to add other than, you know, our reasons are, one, damage to our foundation, damage to the home, damage to our neighbors, the fence that between our neighbors' property. And for safety purposes, you know, this isn't in the report, but it takes time. We don't have really access to the side yard. And we can wiggle around the tree, get through the fence, but if someone needs to get back there quickly, I mean, it's going to take a little bit more time. So I did reach out to some neighbors. We met on site. If I knew that there were more objections, I would have reached out to them too. That's on me. Other than that, I'm here to answer any questions and, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, I noticed in one letter, the request that, I mean, that tree does have kites that nest in it and egrets. And it is fledgling season now and for a while, I guess until October, November. So would you be amenable to not removing it until that season is over?
100%. Yeah, I mean, it's it's been there for a long time and and we can wait until whenever the season is or whenever the right time to do it to minimize the impact to any birds that are up there. Certainly.
Yep, it's it's one of the tallest trees in Heather Gardens, just so they do will will nest there. So.
So.
Yeah.
If you're, you know, if you remove the tree, do you have a plan for like planting another tree? Or?
Not not in that location.
Well, obviously.
We can do that. I mean, we're open.
I was just curious.
No, we don't have any immediate plan. You know, we've owned that home for a number of years and it's a, you know, I have young kids in the community and hopefully they live in there someday. So that's our plan with the home. But no immediate plans to plant any replacement tree.
Got it. Thank you. Anybody else have their comments? All right, now it's open to public comment.
Hi, my name is Matt Beerson. I live at 21 Liberty Street. It's about a block from this beautiful tree. My family and I have been in Heather Gardens for 27 years. This tree is, as you know, one of very few tall redwoods left in Heather Gardens. And I don't understand the urgency to remove it. I believe it is not yet damaging the foundation. It is growing slowly. I believe it is very likely, given the nature of the neighborhood, that within five to 10 years, someone will want to remove the current house, build a new foundation suitable for a two story house. And with a little luck, they'll want to preserve this gorgeous, healthy tree at that point. Larkspur has a wonderful tradition of building around our heritage trees. I hope you'll help this tree survive and remain one of those honored neighbors. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Hi, my name is Dana Hepner, and I am the closest person to the tree. I like my fence is already, it was straight. Now it's it goes like a slump like this. I have to get my toilets. You know, what is it snaked because of the roots? The roots are coming up in my lawn, my front lawn area. I love the tree. I can see half my windows. I can see the tree and I love it. But I am nervous now, especially when it gets, you know, really windy. My son's bedroom. I love the tree, but it's making me nervous. It's going to ruin my house. It's like John said, it is literally this close to the corner of his house. And I I've been in this house. I mean, we've owned it for 21 years. And well, I've been there 21 years. My husband bought it in 2001. But I mean, it's, I love it. I mean, if we could keep it, I would totally keep it. I I love it. But I mean, I don't know what to do anymore. It's, you know, and I get it. And even the branches that go out are at least 30 feet, like going out every direction. And we do have the telephone pole wires that, you know, it's basically it's covering the wire. So it's getting, you know. And I can't even open up my gate anymore because it's the fence, the the roots are pushing the fence. So every time somebody comes over, I'm like, don't open the gate. You can't open the gate. Go around. So thank you. I mean.
Thank you.
I'm not good at.
You're just, you're fine.
Hey, you're everyone that came here. You're here and you're making your voice hurt.
Exactly. You are fine. Anyone else? Want to comment? All right, let's on Zoom. No? Okay. All right, then let's bring it back to commission. So this time, I guess we'll go with Liam first.
I don't miss being on the end.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a tough one, right? It's it's easy for, it's easy for everybody who doesn't live with the tree six inches from their house to to want to preserve that, me included, right? It's a beautiful tree. You know, it's something, it's a landmark. You know, you notice it when you drive by. But I can also sympathize with having a tree that close to to your house. I guess maybe I had one more question for the for the applicant. So you've lived there for quite a while, right? Do you recall how close the tree was to your to your house, like, you know, 20 years ago when you bought it? Because they are, you know, they are relatively slow growing trees.
In hindsight, I wish I had taken pictures, but no, I don't recall.
Okay.
We purchased it in 2007 and it was like, you know, what they said, it's altered the area, right? So it's growing and the roots are growing. We know that much.
Sure. Yeah, understand. Thank you. Sorry to call you back up. Yeah, I guess I'm curious to hear what the rest of my commissioners have to say. I think just based on reading of the findings, I think I would, you know, with no, it's like the it's like the grapefruit tree, right? With with no, we don't have any evidence of damage. If you had an engineer say it's damaging the foundation and, you know, causing damages, and I think I would feel differently. But, you know, it's just just reading the findings, I want to emphasize, I do sympathize with you because it is so close to your house and, you know, it's very easy to write to write a letter and not have to actually deal with with that problem. But, you know, in my reading of the findings, I think I, you know, I'm curious to hear what you guys have to say, I guess.
Brock has recused. Okay.
So having dealt with problem redwood trees myself, I don't think it's fair to to ask the applicant to wait until there's damage to their house to remove a tree. And clearly, the tree is causing damage to the neighbor's fence and, you know, their yard and gate. And it's just spreading, and that's what they do, unfortunately. So, you know, whoever planted this tree originally didn't plant it in a good spot. I mean, that house has clearly been there since the 40s. This tree should not have been planted that close. You know, I I could tell you some horror stories about redwood trees I have to deal with. But I am in favor of the tree being removed. I think that, you know, you need to be, you know, preventive maintenance every once in a while, you know, to protect both houses.
Okay, Natasha.
Actually, I found this one really hard because obviously, we want to preserve the redwood trees. But given the the number of people that came out against this, I mean, I that's so I can see one one side of it. But on the other side, I see the closeness to the property and how it could, it's a potential problem to your property. And it's clearly causing issues with the property next door. So I wanted to see if I could make the findings. And again, I went through the same process I went through with the previous house, which, you know, removal will not affect the topography of the land, or it won't. Removal will not adversely affect the general health, safety and welfare. I don't think it will. So it just came comes down to the same kind of condition, which is, does it pose a hazard with respect to disease, danger of falling, and again, proximity to the existing or proposed structures? And this is my question for staff is when we talk about the that condition having proximity to the existing structure, we does it? Are we, is it just the the structure that's making the application or is it any structure in the neighborhood? So it could in theory apply to the property next door?
I think it could apply, you could apply that to
A fence, let's say.
It's just proximity to structure.
Okay, so the fact that it's damaging the fence next door and the gate, right, and the gate. I still find it hard because it like, again, it's a beautiful tree. I would hate to see it come down. My initial thought when I was reading this was to give it time and to have the applicant go away and come back and maybe come back, come back at a future date. But having heard Commissioner Hall's comment about why wait until the the damage actually happens, kind of resonated with me, actually. I thought that was a fair comment. So I'm just going to hold, I'm going to reserve my my kind of final decision.
Can I throw one other comment in there?
Yeah, go ahead.
Does does us saying no, if we said no, does that open us up to liability? If it does do damage? Not a question that we can answer, but necessarily.
No.
No.
Okay, I I'll let you go, Jeff. I mean, okay, so it is an unusual redwood tree, given that such a big base and then it tapers so quickly, which is really unusual. I have lots of redwood trees on my property on Wiltshire Avenue. I mean, a lot. I have, and these guys are sick of this story, but well, it's pretty dramatic. I had four redwood trees undermined by the creek fall on my house last year. And it did more than $150,000 worth of damage to my house. It went through my roof and it could have killed somebody. That's the second redwood tree I have had fallen on my property in the last 15 years. And because we have a lot of redwood trees, Larkspur is getting windy. It's getting very windy. And these trees can get really scary when they start swaying in the wind. And you're looking at your child's bedroom and asking yourself, is this going to kill my kid? That's a little dramatic, but it's true. The property damage issue is real and kicking the can down the road is not going to mitigate that property damage. And so I think that it's completely reasonable for a redwood tree that's six inches from a house to for the applicant to want to have it removed, not only for the fact that it's causing heaving of the neighbor's fence and, you know, changing of the landscape in their yard and the roots, et cetera. We all love redwood trees. Everybody here lives here because of that. It's a hard position to be in to say, well, let's get rid of one. But unfortunately, sometimes it has to be done. And this is, I think, one of those cases. So I would make the findings for a removal.
Yeah, I guess I just want to comment. I guess to me, I I do understand like preventative maintenance and, you know, it it eventually will. If even if there's no documented evidence of damage to the foundation, like it's it's pretty clear that it eventually will damage the foundation of the home. The the neighbor's gate, frankly, to me, seems like a like sort of a weaker argument to, you know, because gates and fences are, you know, relatively easy to repair. A home's foundation can can get really expensive really fast. I don't know. I just wonder if if maybe you could get another few years out of it, I guess, right? Another few years of habitat. That's
I'm not, that is a mitigating thing. But I mean, I think ultimately, it's going to have to come out. And so, you know, I would think that.
Yes, the question is, do we want to reopen the public comment to allow Commissioner Wagstaff? He can make a comment as a public, member of the public, right?
He can make a comment as a member of the public.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to do that or do you?
Yes, I would like I would like to, like Mr. Wagstaff to make a comment. You're now a doctor, by the way, just like you.
I'm Brock Wagstaff.
Yes.
I was only going to make a comment relative to redwood trees in Heather Gardens. One of the things you have to realize is Heather Gardens is on fill. So you have about four to six feet of good soil. And and we've dealt with redwoods before, including the one in my neighbor's yard. And the problem is they're going to spread out because they can't go down. And so they tend to ball up. I mean, we had roots from our neighbor's redwood tree, which was 30, 40 feet away that were going under our house. So just thought I'd throw that in there.
No, it's actually a really good point because I didn't, I was going to mention is that redwood trees, when they do get undermined or when they have poor land underneath them where they can't go down, are much more liable to fall down in heavy winds. And yes, sir. Absolutely.
We got to have you up at the microphone so the folks on the on Zoom, yeah?
He's making his way.
Sorry. He's getting there.
Could you introduce yourself?
Yeah, Phil Terry, 82 Diane Lane. I've lived there for 58 years. And I've watched the redwood trees and I have a redwood tree that's probably wider than that desk. But I'm interested in the outcome of this because eventually I'm going to have to do something with that redwood tree. It's already dropped 20 feet off the top into the neighbor's yard. I don't know what happened, why it did that. But he came over and said, I'm building a shed there. If it happens again, you're in trouble. And fortunately, it hasn't. But I'm going to have to take that tree out at some point. It's just too big. And it's so close to my house that, you know, I'm there alone, so only I will die. It's a, it's not like our child. But but there was a tree that fell in the neighborhood years ago that killed a boy on Ranch Lane. It wasn't a redwood tree, I have to be honest, but it can happen and it's dangerous. So I think you should not make them come back a couple of years from now because it's going to be the same process. I know I love trees and I know those kites. I think the kites actually, I'm a bird lover. They actually are up the street. There's a couple more redwoods up there on Heather. And I think those are the ones where they actually live. Okay, anyway, that's mine.
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Anyway, so any other public comments? All right, so we've all discussed it, I believe. All right. So we've all discussed it, I believe. Any other comments from within? Okay. Yeah, I don't. Okay. Can we have a motion?
I'll make one.
Sure.
I move to approve heritage tree permit application for 14 Diane Lane at number HTR 25-009 to remove the redwood tree.
All right, roll call? Oh, sec, uh, somebody needs a second.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay. Roll call.
Uh, Commissioner Chalmers?
You're reluctant, yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Uh, another reluctant, yes.
And Chair Swisher?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes four eyes.
Can, can we clarify which, um, which, uh, finding we make? Because I think that finding A is, is, uh, you know, the proximity and damage to the adjacent fence. I, I think, like my yes is predicated on, um, finding B, not on finding A. I don't know if that-
That makes it different. But I, I don't think, I think it's just, it's a-
I think it's both finding-
But I do, I would like to add a condition though, that I'd like a removal that has to happen after fledgling season, uh, which is, I think, after October, um, would be a condition of, of approval.
Can we add that to the motion?
Or do we have to re-
Or do a second?
Can we, should we redo the motion?
Yeah, make, let me make that motion.
You want to amend the motion to approve it with the condition that they have to wait to remove it until after which bird season? All birds? And any birds that are nesting in it?
Well, you can't, that's not possible. But your fledgling season lasts until, I believe, October, or it will, it'll definitely be done by October. So-
By the end of the year?
By the end of, I'd say by, tree removal should commence after, uh, nesting season, which is, uh, after the summer. So I would say, or after summer, early fall. So I would say until October at the earliest.
Isn't there some typical language?
Uh, yeah, we have conditions. There was one in the last two projects, um, what happened from, you're right to second, but-
Right, tell, I-
I think you're safe with October. I mean, my wife is a bird fanatic. So I think she's, she talked to me about this and she said, you gotta wait till October. So.
And maybe we could-
I'm, I am too. I love birds too, by the way.
And maybe we could, I don't know if this is appropriate, if we can encourage the neighbors to just plant trees in their front yard. I mean, young trees.
Plant their own redwood.
Plant their own trees, yeah.
That's not a great spot.
Tree that fall, more redwood? No, doesn't have to be redwood, but tree, yeah. Grapefruit.
No, we don't have to-
As a planning commissioner's report at the end. We can do that at the end. Yeah, that's just, all right. So that was the condition. So we approved that, uh-
Do we need to re-
Do we need to revote on that, with that?
So, second, you would most, or you need a second, Campbell?
Uh-
You need to second it again.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor. We don't have to take a roll call. Anybody opposed?
No.
Okay, good. Passes.
Okay, motion passes. Subject to a 10 day appeal period. You can appeal by filing the form and fee with the city clerk in 10 days.
All right, thanks.
This is bad. You should see Congress right now. All right.
Okay.
All right. Very good. So next item on our agenda. Where is our agenda? There you go. Thank you. Uh, business items. Uh, we have to approve the June 10th and July 8th planning commission meeting minutes. Are there any comments on the planning commission meeting minutes?
You're the last meeting.
No, I was not here in the last.
So the, we had the, uh,
We can-
Do we have to discuss? Yeah, let's do the easy one first. Well, no, there is no July 8th. I've got June 10th and June 24th.
I think it's a typo. It's June 10th and June 24th.
I don't, you're looking at. Um, so which is the one that we had to reconsider is June 10, right?
We didn't approve it. We're not reconsidering it. We were just reviewing.
Yes, yeah, whether it's the right motion. So I do miss that.
I missed it. So I'm just gonna bow out of that conversation.
So, so can, yeah, let's approve June 24.
All right, I move to approve the minutes of June 24th.
And I second.
Can we have a roll? Oh, sorry. I've taken your job.
No.
Can we have a roll?
I've obtained that involved with this. Uh, Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Chair Swisher?
Uh, ding.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Yeah, why tip?
Yeah, you don't need to stay and you're here for that one.
No, I thought you could-
You are.
Oh, the June 24th one. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said the one I wasn't here for. So, yeah, June 24th, I vote yes. So, okay.
No, and you were here for the other one too.
That's fine. What's the one I wasn't here? Last week?
Yeah, so.
Or last, you know, two weeks ago.
Okay. So we've approved June 24th. Now we're going to discuss June.
Yes, let's discuss the next one.
June 10th. So-
What was the issue there?
The issue was that, um, the neighbors questioned the motion. It was an incorrect motion that we made.
Which was?
Which was, would you want to make, why don't we listen to the staff report, right? Is there, no, do we need to make, what was, how, how does this work?
So you have, you need to approve the minutes of the June 10th meeting. You received correspondence from the neighbor that was opposed to the project or had concerns about it, um, indicating that they thought the decision was different than what has been written as the motion. And the applicants have also submitted written correspondence that you have received that they believe that the motion was correct. Staff, um, we've listened to the recording and believe the motion is written as Commissioner Wagstaff stated it at the meeting. And so, um, that's what we've presented for you tonight to vote on. You're not here to rehash the item. It's just to confirm that the motion and the minutes are correct. So if you don't believe they're correct, you could vote against approval of the minutes. Um, but you might want to start with Commissioner Wagstaff since he was the one that made the motion. Um, but there may be members of, we don't, we don't have a public hearing on minutes, but you can open it up for comments if you want.
I mean, I'm happy to share what I think too about what-
That's why we, Mr. Wagstaff.
Um, so I, I relooked at actually two different meetings, as it turned out, but I got the right one, um, eventually. Um, I think it, it, you know, trying to remember back, I think the motion's pretty clear that it was the kitchen. And I think that's partly because, uh, that what, the extension of that is living dining room, living room. And I would not have, um, had them lower the plates in those particular rooms just because they're grander spaces. And, um, I think what I was thinking was kitchen. So.
You're going down the line? Yeah, I, I listened to the recording as well. And that was, yeah, I, I think based on my interpretation or my, you know, hearing of the recording, I think that what is in the minutes is accurate.
I would agree. And besides that, the appeal period has passed. So I think it's a moot point. But I think, uh, I, I agree with Brock and Liam.
I have a slightly different opinion, but it gets to the same place, which is that I think when we were discussing it, when I was talking about it, I was looking at the entire ridge, ridge line. So in my mind, I was thinking when we were talking about the 115 down to the 113, it was the entire ridge line. But then when we went into the motion, the motion was clearly make somewhere along the line, it just changed into just the kitchen. And when we made the motion, it was clearly just the kitchen. And when I listened to the minute, uh, the recording, it was just referencing the kitchen. And I know I didn't say anything and didn't speak up and make any changes to that. And that is the motion that I agreed to. So I am not really in a position to go back and say, I wanted to say, wanted to do something different.
I agree.
And we voted on it as well.
I, I agree. I went back and watched the, the video and compared it to the minutes. And I think that the minutes are correct.
All right. So then we have a motion to approve the minutes. As-
I move to approve the minutes for June 10th as presented.
I'll have everybody other than to make a point about what was stated.
Well, like I say, it's past the appeal period and it's a moot point. So you're welcome to make a comment. I mean, I'm happy to have you make a comment. Sure, he can make an comment. That's why I mean, why, why not?
Uh, Jason Copeland, 123 Pepper, I'm the neighbor. This is not an appeal to the decision. This is to try and what I believe is correct, the decision that I believe this commission made. So I would ask you to, this is going to be a tough one because it sounds like you're already, um, what sounds like changed your mind. But, um, I don't know if you got the letter that we submitted yesterday that we made the point. Um, I'll go to the middle of the letter. Additional support for confirming the entire roof line should not exceed the existing roof line was evident at the July 8th meeting. We're at 1 hour 45 minutes and 24 seconds of the meeting. Commissioner Wagstaff stated, quote, "My intent was that the whole ridge would drop." Shortly after, Commissioner Chalmers stated, quote, "I thought we all agreed the building would not be higher than the existing building." Commissioner Wagstaff again confirmed at the time he intended for the entire roof line to be lowered to the current roof line. And Commissioner Chalmers said, quote, "Yeah, otherwise what's the point?" Now, I understand there are some people who believe there is a point at where you drop the roof line and don't drop the roof line. But what I am suggesting here is that her mindset was not to have a partial drop. It was to drop the roof line as she just stated. Um, so that makes me feel confident that the intent of the approval was the entire roof line. It appears clear in the June 10th video that any statement used by the commission or us that said kitchen was in reference to the entire roof line. And we were calling it the kitchen roof line simply because that was the easy way to reference that roof line. We had no other name for it. Um, it also worth noting that there was never any discussion by the commission to allow any part of the new construction, including any portion of the ridge line, to be higher than the existing ridge, than the existing building. Nor was there ever a comment by the commission correcting your question, the staff question to be voted on, which was to keep the other requirement simple, just to keep the roof ridge no greater than the height of the existing residence, which Commission Chair Swisher report responded, yes, confirming that is what's being voted on. So, um, it, I mean, it seems so evident here. And I understand that you're feeling now as you look back like, oh, this is a fair compromise. I would, uh, appeal that a fair, not appeal because it's, you know, patient, but I, I, I would suggest a fair compromise is to not have 13 and a half foot ceilings to block a neighbor's view affecting our value, affecting our views. To your point, what's the point? When we're in our master bedroom, we are going to see that roof just like we had before, or the new roof, I should say. And so I would ask that you honor the original decision. That seems quite clear based on these, this documentation. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. I mean, unfortunately, we can't relitigate it at this point. I mean, it's not, um, I don't think that's within our purview to do. Um, so I'm not sure exactly what, you know, you're asking us.
We're trying to follow the protocol that, um, that this commission adheres to. And again, I'm not appealing. I'm, I thought that there's a meeting here today to approve the minutes. And I, we were expecting that there's an opportunity to, if necessary, to converse about those minutes, but not to try to change, we're not trying to change-
No, I, I get it. What you're trying to say is that it's the opportunity to correct the minutes that you perceived that are incorrect.
It was a time. So-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If we missed it, we missed it. But it, it just feels like-
No, I get it.
Minutes changed.
Yeah, it's frustrating. I understand your point.
Since the architect is here, um, a quick question. Would it be possible to drop the ridge and leave the plates? In other words, a lower roof pitch?
No, the, Jared Polsky, I'm the architect. Uh, the roof pitch for the living room and the, the area past the kitchen is, is now designed at seven and 12. We could go to six and 12, but that captures, oops, that little bit captures the peak of Mount Ten. So any more than that, we lose the mountain, we lose the top of the peak.
So how much would that?
I think it's, um, uh, just like four or five inches lower. That, that's, I, I, we looked it up. I think it's five inches lower. The width of the building, it's, it's de minimis. But, but any, anything less than six and, uh, six and 12, if you lose the view of the mountain. I also want, want to share by May a picture.
Hey.
Sure.
Neighbor, from the neighbor's photograph, this is their view. We're talking, there's their view of Mount Ten. We're talking about that. I think I'm a mispronounced. Not flocking, not doing my damn, don't, essentially.
Yeah, I think we get in, we run the risk of, uh, some regulatory issues about relitigating, um, this.
No, I was just, as a neighborly thing.
Yeah, yeah. It seems like it could be a gesture.
Could go to six and drop. Yeah. All right. So would, uh, would we just either reapprove the minutes or don't approve them?
You have a hand up on Zoom if you-
Oh, well, sure. Okay. Uh, Andrew Tobin is allowed to speak. To be able to unmute.
So, hi, I'm Andy Tobin. I'm, I, I just heard the commission say that they voted in a favor of this. And so I don't need to necessarily go through my comments. It sounds like though that now, even though we all, everybody said we were in favor of approving the minutes, we might not be. So I'm happy to, I'm happy to talk also. Um, so, you know, I'm the applicant for 30 Loma Vista. I was present at the June 10th public hearing where the commissioner, where the commission unanimously approved our project 50, subject to two clear conditions, the 175 square foot far reduction and lowering the kitchen roof height to match the existing ridge of 113.5 feet. Following that approval, we did what responsible applicants do. We reviewed the hearing video and transcript. We met with our architects and we consulted city planning staff to confirm the intent and scope of the motion. The record was clear. Reduce the kitchen roof height to match the existing roof height. That was confirmed in the meeting and the transcript by city planning staff, including a June 18th email from city planning staff stating, "The two planning commissioners I spoke with agreed that the only the kitchen ridge needed to be reduced." This is also entirely consistent with the motion by Commissioner Wagstaff and supported by Commissioner Hall as reflected in the mission, in the minutes. In those minutes, it says Commissioner Wagstaff moved to approve with staff review of minor changes to reduce the kitchen hot roof height to match the exist, existing roof height. On June 20th, the formal notice of action was issued with identical language. This was posted for all to see per the established process. The appeal period ended no later than Friday, June 27th at 5:00 PM. No appeals were filed. No fees were paid by the Copelands or by anyone. And we moved forward with the plans and renovation expenses in reliance on such finality, just as the process requires. So you can imagine our shock when we learned, when we learned only this morning that on July 8th, our project was effectively reopened and relitigated for 30 minutes. We received no notice that this would occur, no motion to reconsider had been made, no hearing was agendized, and no one was present to represent us. Our neighbors, the Copelands, spoke again multiple times, arguing not just against our design, but against our integrity. The commission debated whether to reinterpret its own motion and vote after the legal deadline had passed. We wouldn't even know about tonight's meeting had the Copelands not emailed city planning staff a letter from their architect last night that was then forwarded on to us and presumably the commissioners. Last night's letter and email are striking for a few reasons. First, the architect's letter is a new argument dated July 17th, or three weeks after the appeal deadline. Second, the architect's conclusion is a personal attack on us and our motives. And third, the Copelands clearly misrepresent the position of various commissioners at the July 8th meeting, which we reviewed. There's no place for this bias, personal animus and misrepresentation in governmental process like this one. This is not how public process is supposed to work. Let me be clear. We have worked hard to uphold the correct process throughout. Before June 10th, we met with all of our neighbors. Seven of them, including both our immediately adjacent neighbors, expressed clear support for our project. Only the Copelands Only the Copelands objected, rallying their friends from outside the neighborhood, including their real estate agent, who actually had her argument presented twice, to publicly shame us for our project. In reality, our project does not significantly block their view of Mount Tam. That's been consistently affirmed by city planning staff reports visually demonstrated in Jared's picture tonight and even expressed by commissioners in the July eighteenth meeting. But we also understand that there's a process and we accepted the commissioners' motions and minutes as documented on June tenth. What happened on July eighth was a procedural breakdown. No notice was given to the affected party, us. No legal basis existed to reopen public deliberation. Yet our home was revisited, debated, and delegitimized without our knowledge or presence. This violates the principles of due process, finality, and equal treatment under public law. We respectfully ask the commission to, one, reaffirm the June tenth approval and minutes as final and binding, reflecting the kitchen roof reduction only, which I heard you say you're going to do earlier. Thank you. Two, prohibit further reconsideration unless a formal application or appeal is filed with proper noticing and fees per Larkspur's code. And three, protect due process for applicants who engage in good faith as we have done every step of the way. We believe in this community and we believe in fair public process. But that process must work the same for everyone and decisions must be respected once made. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. As I commented before, I I said that the the appeals period is passed is a moot point. And as far as those issues, I think that you raised some very good points. But I, so that's why the motion, I think, that we are going to approve the minutes as written.
I I guess, I was chair last week, right?
And not last week, two weeks.
Or two weeks ago, sorry. And and we, we, in the end, we did feel like we needed to review the, you know, we wanted to confirm that these were accurate. So we ended up closing the hearing and moving this to to this week. So that, you know, we are. Right, exactly.
We did what we said we were going to do and we're now.
We all approved, I believe unanimously, the minutes as written. So I think the matter is closed.
Did someone make a motion? Get a motion and a vote?
Yeah, I moved to. I moved to approve the meetings from June tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Seconded by Hall.
Mr. Hall seconded.
All in favor.
Mr. Wagstaff?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Wag, Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Swisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
And if, and I guess as a, you know, if I don't know, the the architects here and they sounded like they were willing to make a gesture of goodwill, but that would be all that would be, so.
Okay. All right. Any planning commissioners' reports?
No.
Do you have a report?
No, but I had a question, which was I guess, if you remember the project at three Heather Way, the one with the, remember that one?
The turret?
Yes.
Yes. Well, the three.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess that never sat with me well, that that it, the way that ended up coming out. And I, and one of the, one of the members of community actually made a suggestion to me that maybe to avoid that happening again, we look to increase the penalties for someone who's not in compliance. And I don't know if that's something maybe we could, I think the priority is the F A Rs, and I wouldn't, let's get that done. But I wondered if that was something we could maybe talk about at some point in a, in a meeting in the future. Just to avoid.
Penalties for noncompliance?
For noncompliance.
Yeah, we can come back and let you know what they are.
Yeah, it's like, it's like if you, somebody's coming in and they've got, they've gotten approval, they go build what they, build something else, and then they come back at a later date. Whether there's some penalty that is related to that.
There is penalties, but, and we can, we can bring back a report, tell you what they are.
Yeah.
How you feel about it.
Yeah, and maybe.
Give you some examples, because it does come up often, especially with like after the fact fence side exceptions. Because if we charge, well, now we're only charging eight hundred square feet. But if you recall in the past, it was a much more significant fee because it went to a hearing. And then to apply after the fact, it was thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars for a fence that we might actually approve.
Right.
Like in this case, the design was actually approved. So there's a balance as to like how much is just so much that someone like doesn't even want to come back or get a permit.
Right. And and I think it's worth, I thought it was an interesting suggestion. It would, if it helps that that situation not happen again, I think it's worth it. And it may not.
Give you information on how much they paid in penalties.
Okay, thank you.
That was a a pretty unique, because what happened was the the staff missed the gable. When it went from a hip to a gable.
To a gable.
And then, you know, he put in the dormers, which actually was going to be a gable, the dormers help a little bit to mitigate. It's, it's a big building, though. Anyway.
Yeah, it was overall a sort of uncomfortable decision for a lot of us here.
I know. And then there was a lot of community support for that one project. And, you know, so.
Wonderful people.
Yeah.
All right, next item is adjournment.
I'll move to adjourn this meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll second that.
Okay.
If you need one, and yes.
All right, then we are adjourned.